Roll call, please. Bush?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Eisner? Lindsey?
Here.
Stefis? Sullivan? Here.
Yes. Before we start, could I make sure your mic is silenced? And tonight, we will not be taking any citizen conversations at this time.
Can you read the pledge?
Yeah, we can stand for the pledge, absolutely.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Due to the pandemic and Iowa County Health Department recommendation is to go 100% virtual education immediately. It is with good cause to hold an emergency school board meeting at this time. Okay. So our items for action tonight are the approval of athletic participation of volleyball, soccer, cross-country athletes during the suspension of academic hybrid model. Would anybody like to? You can go ahead and start, Gary.
I'm gonna start. And as a board member, we don't have to decide or just explain the reasons why we vote. But I'm gonna explain why I voted the way I did the other night because people don't understand why. The motion on the table the other night was to suspend school or close school and suspend all athletic activities. And I sat there and I thought about that motion. I knew the vote to vote yes was the right decision to make, but I thought about the senior athletes. I thought about the senior athletes in the cross-country, volleyball, and soccer. We were told that football had five weeks of their season left, so by my math, if you take two weeks off of that, you still have three weeks. So the senior athletes, we were not shutting down of the football team. But I will not sit here and take away a senior athlete's career. And the reason for that is back in the year 2000, my, one of my best friends, I was wrestling a wrestling match in Dodgeville. And it's a kid that we took under our wing who had, didn't have much going on in life but wrestling. And we heard this snap in this scream. And as my coach and I sat on the match, hold his head. And he was in tears because he knew his career was over. And all he was asking is why? I said, I don't ever want to see a senior athlete go through that again. And it was 10 years later, almost the exact date, in a wrestling practice down in the room when my cousin dislocated his ankle and snacked it. And he was so proud of his career, even though he knew his career was over. He was not gonna let the EMTs cut his wrestling shoe off for the last time. He literally took his wrestling shoe off in as much pain as he was in because that's how much this career meant to him. He had seven screws and a plate put in that ankle. Five weeks after that, on a Monday, I got a call from him. And somehow, I still don't understand how, somehow he was medically cleared to wrestle for the state tournament that week. And I met with him every night of that week, and we wrestled in his basement, him wrestling on one leg. We kept it silent. Nobody knew anything about it, not even his teammates. And then that Saturday, he got his chance to wrestle one last time in the team state tournament, and he pinned that kid in the first period. And that was the proudest moment, one of the proudest moments of my life. So when people stand here, and we got letters saying that we didn't do anything for these kids, and that we were entrusted to do our job, let me tell you something. I have fought tooth and nail. I have scratched and clawed. So these kids could have a chance, when back in early August, nobody thought there was a chance at anything. And me and a few other people have sat here and we have fought for it. Myself, I have went against every single CDC recommendation, threw it out the window. I went against every single state guidelines, threw it out the window. The county guidelines, I didn't care because I wanted these kids to have a chance at sports. I literally looked at the three doctors in our community. Mr. Dunn, Mr. Lindsey, Mr. Lindsey arguably one of the best doctors this state has ever seen. And I basically looked at them in the face and I said, I don't care what your recommendation is because I want these kids to play sports. You know, now in turn, if I was injured and I needed something from them people, the good people that they are, they would take care of me. But if I was them, I would look at myself and say, you know what, you didn't care about me then, so why should I care about you now? So that is what we did, I did, for these kids to have a chance. And for people to act like this is the most selfish and irresponsible thing I've ever seen. We did not take anything from these kids. We gave everybody a fair chance. And the only thing I got left to say is next April, there's gonna be a couple seats on this school board. And there's a bunch of names I expect to see on that ballot because there's a lot of people saying things right now that they don't understand what goes on.
Thank you, Gary. And would any of the other board members like to weigh in on tonight's meeting?
I would for a moment. And the football guys are gonna be upset by my comments, but I've gotta say it. I'm so disappointed to see them having that protest and not socially distanced. I also have to tell you, I hear by rumor that they're having a tailgate now, which really disappoints me. And I also hear rumor that they're having a homecoming party outside of the school, or at least is planned. I don't understand where these guys' heads are. It's Team Mineral Point, the town, the township, it's old folks like me, it's the M-Firm. You're only thinking about yourselves, and I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed in the parents. I've gotten a pile of negative emails, and we're just trying to do our best. And I gotta tell you, my head was in this meeting earlier today. In fact, I asked for it so we could try to find some compromise. But I've gotten increasingly unhappy as the days gone on by the commentary I've had to endure. That's my end of my comments.
Thank you, Doc. Dr. Dunn or Andy, would you like to speak?
Nate?
Yeah, hey Larry.
Good evening, gentlemen and Joni. Larry Stefis here. I thought Monday night, we were more than fair to all of our athletes in Mineral Point. And I thought that was a great compromise, and I stick by my decision that we made Monday night. And that's all I have to say, Nate. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Dr. Dunn or, yeah, go ahead, Doc.
I just, I mean, I can make a few comments, but I'm just unclear on, so the action item is we are, we are re-deciding what to do with all fall athletics during the two weeks that we are 100% virtual at school? Is that my understanding?
Correct.
So what is not on the agenda tonight is the decision to go 100% virtual in the classroom? Is that correct?
Correct.
I don't, I don't have the jet in front of me, so I don't want to go against.
Correct. No, that is correct. This is just, this is just extracurricular athletic participation.
Okay. Could you or Mitch explain to the board and to everyone on here why we're having this meeting and why this issue is on the agenda after the vote? I don't mean to be cynical or anything. I don't mean to, I mean, I have, I know why we're here, but I'd like to hear it clearly as far as the exact reasons why we're having this meeting tonight.
Absolutely.
Could I, could I talk for a minute, Nate?
Yeah.
I had called Mitch because I thought, I got some good emails, I felt, from the soccer parents stating their position. And personally, I thought, you know, maybe we should consider letting them have their soccer, but then after they're done, everybody involved would have a two-week continued virtual. Because it seemed like we gave football, in my mind, somewhat of a favored status by, by letting them to have their postseason, and here's soccer. I gather none of which are positive. And, and you know, if they were to continue a two-week postseason virtual learning and quarantine, you know, why can't they have their season? That was my question today earlier to Mitch, and I may be part of the problem for this meeting, so I'll mute myself.
Thank you, Doc. So the recommendation from the ad hoc committee and from Iowa County on Monday night was to switch from the educational model, from the hybrid model, to 100% all virtual. So those recommendations came in, the board had made the decision to adopt the report card tool as an aid in helping to make the decision. And based on those recommendations, made the choice to go to 100% virtual schooling. Then the conversation became, well, what about extracurriculars? So there was discussion and a vote Monday night. And while they are related, it was suggested that we have a meeting that posted those two specific items on the agenda to re-vote or act again, take action again on those two things specifically, as they were not necessarily clearly laid out in the Monday night board agenda.
And I should add, that was with legal counsel, right, Mitch, that we got?
Correct. That is correct.
So there are two items on the agenda or one?
There are two. We broke them down like the last meeting, Doc. We have volleyball, soccer, cross-country, and, and then there's a separate issue due to a football coach. The football is a separate line item.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I gotta, I gotta ask this question. I'm sorry. When we had the motion the other night on the table, that was Dr. Dunn's motion, and it involved football in the decision. Am I correct? That was the original motion. It was all sports which involved football.
All sports.
My question is, and I'm certainly not looking to offend anybody here. My question is, how come the football coach was able to vote on that? But yet he has to exclude himself from the other?
I don't have an answer for you.
That's a fair question, Gary. You know, I probably should not have voted, but the vote included the school portion of it. And I probably should have asked for it to be separated like I did in the motions after that. That's my error, but I didn't want to be excluded from voting on the school portion.
Andy, do you, Andy, do you or Dr. Dunn want to weigh in on, on this, this meeting?
Yeah, I will. I guess in my opinion is that we've received tons of, of, of letters and people reaching out. And the thing that struck me is everyone I read, they're right. Both sides are, are saying things that make sense, that are right. And I'm, my position is, from Monday's meeting, is we're trying to do what is best for the kids with the motion and not end seasons. Since then, we have learned of soccer's opportunity Thursday and Friday to do something that the school hasn't done in a long time. We've learned that cross-country's postseason starts Friday. So I would like to see us include soccer and allow them to play Thursday and Friday. I don't know that, that starting two days later does a whole lot for us when they're going to be virtual anyway. My other opinion is I think that the students and staff at the high school have done a great job, whether it's luck or by action of keeping cases out of the high school, they've done what we've asked them to. And I think with the information I have now that I didn't on Monday, I think we could have kept six through 12 in school. So because of that, I would be in favor of reinstating the three, the three sports that are on the table from Monday that we were giving postseason to immediately so that they can prepare for the postseason and soccer can participate in their conference championship, which cross-country is allowed to because it's part of their postseason. So I'm gonna make that motion and we can, we can get moving on this.
Okay. So do we have a second on Andy's motion?
Can I hear the official motion, please?
Thank you. Essentially to reinstate all three sports in the, in the motion immediately with the provision that the students, when they are completed, when they've completed, if we're still in the all-virtual, they start their 14-day virtual at that time.
So you think something like a self-quarantine after they're done with their competition as long?
Right, like we included the other, we included the other night is, is the concern was if they were to have picked up anything.
Once, once we have a second, Gary, then I'll read John's. Because now that we're, we have got a motion, we need a second on this motion.
These sports play, right?
Correct, starting this week.
I get that. Didn't we allow that the other night?
Well, this is different because now they can play, soccer would be able to play for the conference championship Thursday, Friday. The motion, I think, last, on Monday was no more, no conference meets and that. But when the tournament started the next week, it would allow that to happen.
So the motion is to allow all fall sports to continue as scheduled?
The three, the three.
Just the three.
Except for football?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and why are we treating football different? We need a second, right?
We need a second, yes, because Andy cannot, just chose not to vote on the football, so that's why we're doing them separate again.
I will second it because that was my original idea earlier in the day, so I, I mean, same idea, but that's what I called in about.
Okay. Thank you, Doc. And with that second, I will start with, this is a letter from Joni. She is not able to attend tonight, so she has a letter here. And I will read her thoughts. Prior to Monday evening's meeting, my stance regarding school-sponsored athletics during the COVID-19 pandemic was that we must refrain from any extracurricular activity until we can safely have our students in school with greater frequency than our current hybrid model allows. As a school, our primary focus is education and extracurricular activities are just that, extra. On Monday evening, we as a board, under the guidance of several medical professionals, made the decision to suspend in-person education for two weeks. When the discussion moved to sports, it was shared that some of our sports team's seasons would end during the two-week suspension. This meant that by suspending their sporting seasons, the school board would in effect immediately and permanently end their season. This was especially upsetting when considering senior student athletes would, who would never be given the closure that would come from knowingly playing their last game. As a board, we came up with the compromise that we felt would allow those student athletes the opportunity to play their final games while still achieving, achieving a 14-day period of no in-school contact in an effort to reduce the spread of COVID-19. During the meeting, it was shared that there were significantly, significantly more than two weeks of the football season remaining. But even if the football season was paused for two weeks, those student athletes would have a chance to take the field again during this season. As you are all aware, there has been a tremendous amount of feedback given regarding this decision. I appreciate everyone that has taken time to reach out and share their point of view. In hindsight, I see the football team's point. We were treating them differently than our other fall sports. This was done with the absolute best intention of the board, with the hope of giving every student athlete the opportunity to finish his or her season on the field or court. I can see now that this hope was in vain, and while it is unpleasant and unpopular, the fair and equitable decision is to suspend all sports until classes resume. Thank you, Joni Heiser. So with that being said, I will weigh in slightly on this. I, I would like to say thank you to, thank you to the soccer parents and the cross-country parents and athletes that, that reached, somebody, you're on, you're not on mute. And I would like to thank the individuals that reached out to the board and myself with wanting to have these discussions about this, about this decision that the board made. We've had multiple, like I said, multiple sport parents and athletes reach out to us and what I feel was a very productive action in reaching out to us and wanting to have conversation. And so that being said, I would, I would love to see these, these kids participate, especially these, these guys this week, these soccer kids and cross-country athletes. I personally would, would never shut that down with the opportunity that they have ahead of them. So that's my thoughts on this.
I, I also still want to express my dissatisfaction with the protests last night, the lack of social distancing. And if they're out there having a tailgate now, that is making me unhappy. That may be a rumor, but that's what I hear. I'm also very disappointed in their behavior. I think there's some outside football behavior that needs to be handled, and I'll leave that to the football coaches. That's just my comment.
Thank you, Doc. Doc Dunn?
I'll go ahead and weigh in. I mean, first of all, I just want to thank everyone for emailing me, contacting me, sending things to the board, comments. You know, clearly, students, athletes, parents are extremely passionate about sports in Mineral Point. And, you know, that's what makes this district so great. And, you know, I take a lot of pride in the fact that, you know, not, not only do we have athletic and academic excellence, but, you know, we, we win the sportsmanship award almost every year. And, you know, that says a lot about how much we care about athletics and how much we respect our competition and how important sports is to the community. And I really appreciate the comments from the other board members, especially Gary. You know, your experiences with, with athletes and how much that's meant to you, you know, resonates really powerfully with me. And I'm really proud to serve on this board with, with all of you, honestly. And, but we're, we're faced with a really tough decision at this point. And I think, you know, despite the fact that emotions are riding really high here and there's a lot of passionate people expressing their voices loudly and emphatically, and I, and I hear them and I feel that emotion and passion. I can't bring myself to, to feel like having extracurricular contact is a smart thing right now. And if this board has looked at the data, has looked at recommendations from the county health department, and has seen how we are on the verge of a major crisis in this community with this coronavirus, and decided that it's unsafe for our students, seniors, to pre-K, we've decided unanimously that it's unsafe to be in a classroom six feet apart with masks on. And yet we, we feel like it's okay to be in a much higher risk situation. I know, I know it depends on the type of sport, but with extracurricular activities outside of school, kids in their cohorts, in different cohorts, co-mingling on the same team, and how that potentially increases the risk. I just don't see the consistency there in, in why we think being in a classroom is unsafe, but being on a practice field is safe and appropriate for the amount of risk that's escalating in this community. Now, I'm not out to punish any team, any, any student's behavior. This is not, this is not a vindictive opinion. This is, this is, this is very simple. And that is, we are in a pandemic that has finally hit home in Iowa County, in Mineral Point. And this move to go 100% virtual is not a reaction to positive cases. It's not a reaction to anything that happened on any kind of athletic field. It's a preventive, it's a proactive move to try to control the spread of this virus in this community, whether it's amongst teachers, coaches, students, other household members. We are, we voted to go virtual for that reason because we're trying to do our part to keep this pandemic from spreading like wildfire. And I'll tell you, I mean, we've already had nine cases in the district. I personally had to deal with six cases positives today. I personally had to deal with, with six positive tests and got news of our first death. And, you know, Madison hospitals are diverting patients and our hospitals are starting to fill up in Darlington, in, in Dodgeville. Things are on the cusp of something very serious here. And I think this board has the obligation and responsibility to take this very seriously and be the governing body where cooler heads prevail. And I know where our hearts are. We want to be back to normal. We want our awesome football team to be kicking butt on the football field. We want our cross-country kids to be winning the conference meet. We want our soccer team to finally get a solid shot at the playoffs. I get it. And it's killing me to even have this discussion, but the situation is right now where we need to do what we can to hunker down and stay at home and stop the spread of this virus. And as a school, as a large part of this community, that's the obligation we have. And that, that's where I, that's where I stand. So I don't feel like we should treat any sport differently. I know that some sports are higher risk and lower risk than others. But out of fairness to all the athletes, I don't support any athletics happening while we're 100% virtual. And I'm not gonna cherry pick a certain sport over another. I'm not gonna say whether it's a regular season game or a tournament game. You know, this is bigger than all of that, and it's, it's bigger than splitting those kind of hairs. So I want to apologize to all the athletes and the parents of athletes that are listening tonight and hear my speech. This is not an easy decision for me to make. But this is the right thing to do at this time in this community, and we will look back if, if, if we allow people to continue to co-mingle like this, we will regret it. And not only regret it as a community, even just the winter sports. You know, what's gonna happen to the, to the next season? You know, we, we will, we need to take drastic measures now in order for us to get back in school as soon as possible and get back, back to sports as soon as possible. This is a, this is a small price to pay now so that we can have a normal. This is a, this is a small price to pay now so that we can have a normal, at least somewhat of a normal remainder of the school year. And thanks for, thanks for the time.
Thank you, Doc.
I, I would like to add a comment. Everything Aaron has said is absolutely right on. The only reason I second this motion is with the two-week postseason quarantine, that would include the coaches, all the participants, the ticket holders, students attending these events. That's what we'd have to do as far as satisfying the sports in my head, but everything Aaron said was spot on.
Thank you, Doc.
I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Lindsay, did, what did you say about the, were you talking about attendance?
Absolutely. If you've ever watched some of the kids there on the stands, I, I don't know. I, I just think everybody has to stay home at least two weeks after the last event.
Okay, because I, I was going to say, we can, we can always remedy that.
And I didn't, just to clarify, I didn't include, um, anyone besides the student athletes in my motion, because they're not, um, the coaches are not spending 15 minutes in close proximity to the athletes from other communities. So, so the motion I had just included the student athletes.
How about the ancillary staff, the ticket takers and so forth that are part of the school?
I didn't know that we would be allowed to host with the school closed in the next two weeks.
I, I don't know.
I was assuming we are not.
No, we, if, if we were to, um, if, if we do play in the volleyball tournament, even if we would have a top seed, we, we would give that up. We are not going to host any tournament games in the gym, in our gym.
So by, by that, I fully understand that. Um, what's the point of having fans then if we're not going to host it in our own gym? I mean, is there any consideration to no fans to make this work? Is that a, I don't like it, trust me, I don't like it at all.
We definitely, we definitely can, uh, can make that work, Gary, if, you know...
I don't, yeah, I don't like it, I just want to be on the record for that, I hate it. It's not fair to the kids at all, but at least the kids get a chance to play their senior years.
And, and that would be with us going on the road for volleyball. I just believe if the, if the building is going to be off limits, we probably should not hold an event here.
Correct, I agree with that. So do we have a, uh, we've got a motion in a second on this, is, is that kind of settled on what you guys agreed on with this motion between Andy and Doc, Lindsay?
Yeah, I agree now.
Okay. Larry, are you still on?
I didn't put fans in there, I'll leave that up to admin. My motion will just stay, the student athletes.
Right, and, and just, just so you guys know, obviously each school has their own rules.
Yeah. Is Larry on to weigh in on this, this discuss, discussion?
Yeah, Nate, you got, you got me?
Yep, we got you, Larry.
Hey Nate, I got a question on the, the 14-day quarantine. So does that end at the end of the school two-week virtual quarantine? I'm, I'm just curious, because if, uh, if, um, well, back to the, the football program, so if they resume play after two weeks, then will the football players be expected to practice two-week, uh, virtual themselves?
To be two weeks after, after, after we come back, is that what you're saying? This is, this pertains to the volleyball, soccer, and cross-country teams right now, Larry?
Yep, I, I totally understand, but, uh, so the, the postseason will, will run after the school two weeks.
My motion is, is, I guess to clarify, is if they participate, two weeks, we have a 14-day, um, virtual that I believe ends the 23rd.
Twenty-seventh would be the first day back, twenty-seventh?
Yeah, if, two weeks from their last competition, um, in that period.
Before, before the 27th?
Yes, so if they were to play on the, the 22nd, two weeks from then.
Okay, okay. I mean, one would have to say it doesn't make a lot of sense, so if you, if you play on the 26th, I'm just saying, and, and you, so then you, you need a, a two-week virtual quarantine, and if you play on the 29th, you don't. I, I, I'm just, I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody.
Yeah, that, yeah, you, that's a, a very valid point there, Larry.
The consideration I'm giving is if we're back in school, we're back in school.
Yeah, if we're back in school, but, yeah.
We haven't, we haven't made them quarantine all season. If we're back in school, uh, we believe things have gotten better and kids can return to school. So at that point, I wouldn't think it would be necessary. I agree with the motion that way.
Quite a bit different than, than the way I understand it. I, I understood if, if, uh, a student plays on the 26th, then, then he or she is on virtual learning until, for, for 14 days after that. So you're saying if school goes back in session on the 28th, then the two-week virtual quarantine is...
If they're back in school, I don't, yeah, it's just, it's if they participate, the, the last day they participate during the, the virtual time, because that's the way it was the other night. So that's why I included that.
And you're talking student, student athletes only, not, not...
I believe that the coaches are socially distanced from the opponents during the game.
I agree. And, and it was mentioned about, uh, uh, ticket takers or, or, uh, spectators? Student spectators? Where do we stand on that?
Yes, that was, that was mentioned, uh, ticket takers in this, in these three sports would not be at our, at our school, so...
Okay, okay, and how about student spectators?
Uh, that was kind of a, a very kind of loose end there, where Andy had suggested to leave that up to the administration, um, on how to maybe do that.
I think that's fair to leave it up. We can trust the administration to make the right call.
Because I'm not, I'm not personally opposed to the parents of 15 athletes going to a game and spreading out. I don't like 45 students in the student section standing shoulder to shoulder when we're not sending them to school. So I didn't want to make a no spectator, um, portion, because I think, you know, parents' masks, separating themselves across the gym, um, doesn't present the same issue that the student section shoulder to shoulder would. So I didn't include that at all in my motion.
Okay, I heard that.
Uh, I just want to, just to, just to offer some clarification for, if we're going to include a 14-day quarantine for athletes, um, I'm a little confused, I just want to get some clarity here. So I think the whole intent is that, the, 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 the assumption is that when a student athlete participates in an event, they could become exposed to the virus, because they could be coming in contact with an opposing, a student from an opposing school that may have COVID and not have been tested, may be asymptomatic and test positive the next day, uh, we don't know. And that's why we're wearing masks, and that's why this is a huge problem, right? Because it's hard to sort it out. So the assumption is that from the last contact at an event with a competing school, there's a risk there. And that, my, my understanding is that's the theory behind the 14-day quarantine from that last contact. And if, if the board agrees that that should happen, then that should take place regardless of what the rest of the school is doing. Okay? Because if, if the 14-day quarantine expires when everyone goes back to school, then it's not a 14-day quarantine. It's a, if they play on the 26th, it's a two-day quarantine, which is not really the point.
No, 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 it's 14 days from their last competition.
Okay, that's not what it sounded like. Okay, so if, if on the 20, if 14 days from Tuesday, from yesterday, our numbers look better and we decide to go back to the hybrid model and get some kids back in school, then the, the 14-day quarantine for the athletes still remains in effect from their last event?
Correct.
Right, i- if they play during this two-week period?
Yes.
And then we can decide after, after the two-week virtual period has ended, we can decide whether to extend that requirement or adjust it accordingly. That's, that's my understanding of how it's...
Yeah, that was the intent. I was just using it because it was used the other night to appease concerns, to allow, um, students competing in the postseason, but avoid the risk of them bringing it back into the school.
No, that's fine, I just, uh, I, I hear Larry's concerns and his, his questions, and I, I, I think it's important to talk through what this exactly means, especially for everyone listening, you know, parents and athletes. Okay, if I participate and I play all these tournaments while my, while my friends are 100% virtual at home, I understand that I need to continue to be virtual for two weeks after my last athletic event of the fall season during this two-week period. Sorry, that wasn't clear enough. After, after my last event during this two-week period, not of, not of the fall season.
May I ask a question? Or make a statement? We're not just worried about other towns giving it to the pointers, it's prevalent in Mineral Point. So if we're going to have them quarantine after getting together and co-mingling at practice and events, I almost feel like that needs to include the last practice while the rest of the school is virtual, not just competing with other towns. Most of the cases we see are be given to each other from local people, not from somebody from another town.
They wouldn't practice after their last competition.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
We know they continue to compete, i- if they're still competing.
So this will go beyond the two weeks while we're all still virtual? Like the request to have them quarantine?
Yeah, so essentially what I'm understanding is the football team could be, if their season's five more weeks, this, I'm just using them for an example, because there's, is the longest season. Seven more weeks, they'll be on virtual, is that, that is correct?
My, I would make that assumption, yes.
My motion is two weeks, but if the, if the board wants to do that with the, the football motion, um, they're more than welcome to.
Yes, that's a separate, that was just a, just an example, because that season extends longer and I knew the numbers. Dr. Dunn?
Uh, I totally agree with Jane's point. I think the assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong, Vicky, I think the assumption of the three fall sports, the soccer, volleyball, cross-country, is that those three sports are scheduled to end within the next 14 days based on their postseason schedule. Is that accurate?
Well, it, it depends on, um, how many, how many events they would win, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, still on top of that, that last competition day, 14 days after that last competition.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So I, do you want me to amend my motion to state from their last competition?
I believe that would be...
And eliminate the 14 days? I, I mean, I'll do whatever we need to do to, to clarify.
I think just to clarify things, you know...
For the three sports mentioned, uh, I'll amend the motion that they have to quarantine 14 days from their last competition of the season.
Is that still good with you, Doc, since you seconded that, Becky Lindsay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll still second that. That's exactly what originally I thought would be acceptable.
Okay.
I want to say, not, not great, but acceptable.
Okay. Is there any more board weigh-in on this, uh, either the doctors? No, uh, Larry? Anything else from you? Andy, what about you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Gary? Larry, I see you're back on, yep?
Yeah, you bet. Um, so, so Andy's motion, basically, the only, the only difference from Andy's motion from what we did Monday night is to allow soccer to play in, in a, in a conference championship. Am I hearing that right?
Correct.
Yeah, essentially, it allows them to play Thursday and Friday and gives them the opportunity to, to win their conference. Uh, because I was unaware Monday that, um, cross-country starts Friday.
Okay, I understand.
Really athletics would start back up again Friday anyway for the school.
All right, yeah, and, and, uh, I, I understand. How many, how many student athletes do we have from Mineral Point that participate in soccer? Does anybody know?
Six.
Seven.
Seven, that's what I meant.
All right, I'm good. Go ahead, Nate.
Okay, all right, we will call the question then. Okay, to allow soccer, cross-country, and volleyball to return immediately, and student athletes will self-quarantine after their last, starting from their last day of competition? Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, on to number two, approval of athletic participation of football athletes during suspension of academic hybrid model. Does anybody like to, would anybody like to make the motion?
So this is to allow practice and potential gain next Friday night during the hybrid mod, or during the 14-day closure, correct?
Correct.
I don't care. I've supported the kids from the start, and I'll continue to support them, I'll make that motion.
Nate, uh, would you read it again? I, I'm slowing the uptake here.
Yes, it's approval of athletic participation of football athletes during suspension of academic hybrid model. Uh, Gary just made the motion to, made the motion to accept. Would anybody like to second?
Nate, I got a question.
Yeah, Larry?
Will the football program...
Do you want to second this motion yet, Larry, or no?
I got a question.
We can't really, we've got...
I just, I just want to, I just want some information, just one point. Will the football program be able to participate in postseason play without practice or play the next two weeks?
Can I, can I answer that, Nate?
Yeah, go ahead, Vic.
Um, I just received a document yesterday, since, since we are not part of a conference, we are considered independent, we would have to win six football games in order to participate in the postseason. And we have won three, most likely not have a game this week, and we really would need to have three games the last three weeks of the regular season.
My, my question, Vicky, was, was it the days of practice or so many, so many games? Like, games won or lost is not important to me.
Okay.
I, I'm just curious on, on days of practice or number of games?
Okay, so if, if you're shut down between seven and 13 days, a team needs to practice three days before they can play their next event. If you're shut down for 14 or more days, a team has to have five practices before they can play their next football game. So the way it is set up right now, not only would we miss this Friday for football, the 23rd for football, but the potential to miss the October 30th game at River Valley. but the potential to miss the October 30th game at River Valley.
So if we, if we back this up by one day, that would include the game with River Valley, Vicky, is what you're saying?
If we can allow them to practice on October 26th, yes.
So do you want me to withdraw my motion so we can include that? Like, I have no problem doing that.
If you, if you amend your motion, Gary, to include the 26th, I will second that motion.
No, I do not have the motion to include the 26th. So if you want to include the 26th, don't second this motion then. So you.
So what is your motion?
My motion was to allow football participation during suspension.
Which, right, starting.
Right, starting right now.
Yes.
So under, given what Mrs. Doll just said, right, and I understand what Larry is saying. If nobody seconds my motion, the motion dies.
Well, I was letting him ask his question. I will second the motion, the original motion. Uh, with that, I'm going to speak a little bit, uh, about this. I'm going to basically shadow what Dr. Lindsay said. Um, and again, I would, uh, I, I would really, I really want to thank people that, that reached out in what I feel a productive manner, um, to us. I am a little bit disappointed in the, uh, the actions of, of certain individuals, um, and some decisions made and some, uh, some comments made towards certain members of the board that have, as Gary said, fought tooth and nail for this from day one, and some that, some of which who have donated a lot of time and money into the football program and to make, uh, to make comments, um, uh, without knowing all the facts and maybe watching the video, I, I think is very, uh, very selfish and, and very childish. And with that being said, I will let somebody else have the motion, uh, the table on this issue. Dr. Dunn?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I, I would just say I'm disappointed. I, um, I, I have tried to support the football team in many different ways. I don't want to recount what they are, but I, I'm very disappointed. And, um, I think that goes from, uh, parents to coaches. Um, that's all I can say. I'm just very disappointed.
Dr. Dunn, you had a hand raised?
So the, the current motion, if I understood Larry and Gary and you talking, the, the current motion is to allow football activities to resume immediately.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Uh, did you want to weigh in anymore on the, Dr. Lindsay looks like he wants to jump in?
Yeah, I, I want to say one thing. You know, everyone's trying to do their best job, trying to take all the information, trying to do what's best for the community at large as well as the kids. It's, it isn't like we have, uh, some, an agenda to be negative. I want the football team to win a conference. I want everyone to win a conference. I want everyone to get all A's. But I'd rather see students protesting an inadequate education than, than some of the board, uh, things that happened. I, I just was so disappointed to see that on the news. And actually, there was some misinformation being said by some of the people that were being interviewed. Uh, it, it's just telling to me that, uh, we're trying to do our best and I don't think you guys are listening. That's what I would say.
Dr. Dunn?
Uh, I'm not going to support this motion for the reasons I've already laid out. To me, I'm treating all extracurricular activities the same and I hope everyone listening can just appreciate that I'm trying to be consistent with where I'm coming from. I think it's just not smart to, to, uh, allow interactions at this time when our pandemic's on the verge of really surging in a difficult time. And I, I don't want to feel like the school is part of that. So, uh, and so my vote against this motion is not any kind of punishment against the protests or against any comments that parents made to me. This is, uh, this is simply because I feel like it's time to stay at home and be safe and keep, keep this pandemic under control as, in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. That's very, very well respected for your opinion. Thank you. Yeah, Larry, yes.
Uh, so the motion on the floor is, is not to resume football immediately, correct? It's, it's to resume it on the 26th?
No, it's, it's to resume tomorrow, essentially. I mean.
Oh, I, I'd not support that. I, I, if, if I second or made the motion, I, I was mistaken. I, I would support the football program to resume on the 26th to make sure that they get a game in on that Friday, the River Valley game like Vicky alluded to.
Okay.
I want to say this. Uh, Mr. Dunn has been 100% the same on every vote and I respect his opinion. And I look at this, this motion that I made is basically to allow us to get into a postseason. When back in August, we didn't even know if we were going to have any game. The people were pleading, just give us a chance at one game. And I talked to, only one coach actually was thankful that we had a single game. And I told him, I said, I'm just glad these kids get the chance to play. So now we're, as Mr. Dunn said, we're in the middle of a school shutdown to prevent the spread of this. And I made the motion then to allow, basically to allow the football to continue on so that they can have a shot at a postseason play. Now, and I've thought about this since Monday night, when I originally heard about the protest that was going to happen. I thought, you know, I remember very well back in March when the Blackout Girls and the Platinum Girls had made the state championships. And then as far as I'm concerned, they had it ripped out from underneath their feet. And not one single protest was made about that. And Darlington was, as you know, they went virtual two weeks ago or something, suspended all sports. Not a word was said down there. And I'm just, I'm just very disappointed in how this has all played out.
Uh, would anybody else like to, any board members like to chime in on, on this, uh, on the side before we vote? All right, if not, uh, we'll call the question, please. Okay, to allow football participation during the suspension of the hybrid academic model. So in other words, to play football, start playing, practicing football immediately. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Abstain.
Dunn?
No.
Lindsay?
No.
Stephan?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion fails. Motion fails. Uh, would anybody like to mo- make the motion to adjourn?
We have, we have to have a decision on football because, to, oh, I'm sorry, to go.
Okay, so Larry, would you like to make a new motion on, uh, sorry, on, uh, on action item number two, the football participation?
To start on the 26th?
Uh, correct, correct, Vicky?
Hey, I'm confused.
Yes.
This is, that's what they needed to play on the 30th against River Valley?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I will put that motion on the floor.
So allow football to begin participation on October 26th?
Yes, I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Would anybody like to have a further discussion on this? Item. Dr. Dunn, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I know this is hard to, to see everybody. Uh, just, uh, um, I'm a little, I just want to be consistent here. If, if we're asking the other fall sports to endure a 14-day quarantine after their last contact, I feel like we should treat the football team the same. So now, so interestingly, the motion, uh, the previous motion, uh, if I understand it right, basically says, regardless of when the last event is of their fall season, cross-country soccer, shoot volleyball, regardless of when that is, even if it takes place after our two weeks of 100% virtual, they will still need to do a 14-day quarantine from that last event of their season. That's my understanding of the prior motion. Is that correct? Mitch or Angie or anybody?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so what, i- if we were to treat the football team the same, and again, this is not me trying to punish, punish the football team because their season is longer than the other fall sports, but the theory would, i- if we were, i- if we believe in this idea and this concept, that means the football team would have to remain 100% virtual until their very last, until 14 days from their very last game, which would be several weeks from now. Now, I, I don't think that's a, a horrible idea. I think it's a, it's, if, if we have to have sports, that is one safety precaution, um, that I think adds some protection for spread in the school. But I just want to make sure that the board doesn't want to include that in the motion and, or whether, uh, and if they do want to include it, you know, do they want to include it in the same way as they've included it with the other fall sports, which means 14 days from the end of their last game, regardless of when that takes place?
Yes, I, I, I would definitely agree with that. Larry, would you like to add that to your motion?
Nate?
Yeah, Vic.
Can I say something?
Yes.
One of the things that's going to be affected here with these 14-day quarantines, however long these teams play, is going to be the start of practice for the winter season. And they have to have so many practices in before their first event.
That is, I know.
So, I mean, there's, there's unintended, unintended consequences, so to speak. I mean, if we have a winter sports season.
Hey, Miss Doll, for the record, when I seconded the motion, I knew, I knew that was going to happen. And a lot of people, a lot of people on this won't understand what I'm saying here, but this is, this could potentially run into an issue with the skin fold, uh, for the wrestling team. So I, I'm very well aware when I made that motion, um, what I was doing. I just want everyone to be clear.
So, um, and that's, this would be as of now. Uh, you know, things could change if for some reason the numbers get crazy and, and, and go back the other. Um, you know, maybe we can revisit this, but, but as of now, you know, everybody's had to sacrifice something, unfortunately. Some more than others and that, that's, if this is like Dr. Sun, like Dr. Dunn said, I mean, we're being, you know, if we're going to hold those other students out for two weeks, then I think that's only fair. Um, in my opinion as well to, to do the same, even if it does go into winter sports. They, they might have to make a decision, a very hard decision. Uh, but again, that's, that's not my motion to, to, uh, change. Yes, Larry, would, yeah.
I would, I would add that to my motion. And I think, uh, I think it's important to know that, uh, I know the board is meeting on the 26th and the board could take action at any time to extend the quarantine or, or to dismiss it, um, based on, on, uh, the evidence at the time, the numbers at the time. So I, I'll give, once again, I would include that in my motion, the 14-day for, uh, virtual quarantine, I guess.
From the last event, from the last competition?
From the last event, just, just like, uh, we did with, uh, volleyball, soccer and cross country.
Okay. Uh, would anybody like to make any more comments on this, um, agenda item, action item? Uh, if not, we will call the question. To allow football participation to begin on October 26th and the football athletes would stay in virtual education with a 14-day self-quarantine after the last day of competition. Stephis?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Abstain.
Dunn?
No.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, anybody like to second?
I'll second.
Andy, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Everyone.